Welcome, everyone, to the January 14th City Council Work Session. Welcome to everybody in the audience and everybody at home. Before we get into the business today, I want to call your attention to a few things that are in front of you. You'll see these cards that are in front of you. You'll be sent a packet, in your packet, of the easy to say, "Thank you for making our community a better place." The idea behind these is that you take some with you, and if you see something where you think somebody's doing something that is really good for the community, that you just leave them a note and sign your name on it and show them appreciation for the things that you see happening in our community. The other thing here I got yesterday at the RAIN meeting, it's a recent piece of literature on our Regional Accelerator and Innovation Network that I thought you would find informative and interesting, so I wanted to share that with you. Okay. First item up today is the election of the 2015 council officers. Council President, for a second?
For a second. Thank you. I move to elect Claire Sorette as President of the City Council for 2015.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Okay. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven in favor. Claire, are you there?
Yes, and I'll vote yes.
That's good. Eight in favor and none in opposition if passes. Thank you. Go ahead.
I move to elect Greg Evans as Vice President of the City Council for 2015.
I'll go ahead and second that also.
Moved and seconded. All of those in favor, please indicate. There are seven here. Claire?
Yes?
Yes. That just sounds like a snort, Claire.
He's not laughing.
No offense, Greg.
Honestly, I can't count that. I can't hear it. Can you hear it?
No.
Say yes clearly, Claire.
Yes, clearly, Claire.
All right. Tap once for yes and twice for no.
Eight in favor and none in opposition passes. Thank you all, and now it's time to...
Before we go on.
I just wanted to let you know that you will see confirmation of the election of council officers on your February 7:30 meeting because the code says that officially you have to elect council officers at a regular meeting, which means it's a 7:30 meeting. We've done this before where you have the non-regular meeting before the regular meeting. So they're elected today, but you will see something on the consent calendar just confirming that.
Okay, that's fine.
But that's cool.
That's cool. All right, so Greg, you're it?
We play musical chairs.
Yep, you get to be the...
You get to be the meeting.
Sure.
Enter and sign in.
All right, so the first item on our... Second item on our agenda today is the Library Local Option Levy. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. But, excuse me, before we get started, it's just great to be back for this next term for the council. We appreciate all the important topics that you'll be discussing over the next several months, the first of which is the library. And we had an initial work session on this prior to the end of the calendar year. Connie talked to us about the library of the future, and she's continuing that conversation now.
Great. Thank you.
Happy to hear it you too.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you for inviting me back after the November presentation. Today, we're bringing three levels of local option levy response that would respond to the requests that the citizens want for the Library of the Future. As a reminder, the Eugene priorities for Library of the Future include creating young readers, connecting with the online world, encouraging lifelong learning, stimulating the imagination, providing a community space. In a quick sum up, what Eugenians want from their library is all these services, but they want more access to them. A reminder of our existing service level if there were no supplemental funding from a levy or other sources. There are three locations, downtown, Bethel, and Sheldon branches, open limited hours. There's access 24/7 to our virtual branch online through the library's website. And there are some limited off-site services provided, such as storytime to go or delivery of homebound services. To increase access, as Eugenians want, we would need to increase our hours. We would need to find ways to reach, serve people more in the neighborhood branches. We would need to provide delivery of services directly into the community, to other... to the members that are there, wherever they're gathered. We would need to provide additional technology and training to use it to help Eugenians face the future that is before us all. And we would need to make sure our library collections and spaces are kept up to date. The three levels of local option levy that we've prepared are possible responses. Each would be a greater positive impact on individuals, families, and the city. In developing these, we have kept in mind the envision Eugene pillars, the triple bottom line principles, and best practices in library services. Levy option one would start with the existing services, but it would add a new layer, reaching more people. The first step of levy option one is to restore hours at all three locations. We have heard again and again that the current hours we're open, particularly at the branches, are not meeting our community's needs. They're not convenient, particularly for families and elderly people. Also, the downtown hours Sunday morning have impacted wait times at the computers tremendously, limiting access there. So that's where we start with levy option one. The next thing we would add is a new service, a library spot automated kiosk, which kind of like an automat would provide self-service in a high-traffic community location in a way that is unattended. And if... We may have a video to show you briefly how it'd work, but if not, we'll just... Why don't we just skip ahead? Basically, it works like an automat. If you've ever been in Times Square and bought a tuna fish sandwich, you scan your library card, punch in a location like, you know, C-13, and it dispenses the item that's in that, be it a... The kind of thing we would think about stocking this with would be the same kinds of things we have on our lucky day shelves at our three branches now. It has a limited capacity. It's not going to be a full-service branch, but it could also serve as a Wi-Fi hotspot because we know that that's a huge service that is needed out in our communities. In addition to the restoring of hours and the kiosk, we would provide an enhanced makerspace. You've heard about makerspace a little bit already in the previous presentation. What it does for the community is extend the concept of a library where we purchase for everyone books or DVDs or whatever to share. Well, this is purchasing the kind of equipment that many small businesses, teenagers learning new skills, nonprofits need, like it may be a 3D printer, it may be sophisticated software to make presentations that small businesses need. So there's a number of ways that we could go with this. And the levy option one would bring resources to enhance that even more than the $20,000 that the Library Foundation has already raised from private donations to start that. The total cost of levy option one would be $1.8 to $2 million per year. That for a typical household is about $25 to $30. Now we'll talk about levy option two. This would not only meet the people that levy option one services would, it would go beyond that in providing more access. It would add another full-service location. As you may recall, this is one of the things that is most often asked for when people talk about library services to us. Currently, we have downtown and two branches. This would add a third branch in southwest. And just as we're working with the Y in West Eugene to relocate our Bethel branch in a partnership, we would be looking to partner with some other community agency to find real efficiencies in locating a third branch. We would also expand our outreach services to reach people where they are: schools, community centers, parks, businesses, senior living, low-income housing, childcare centers, neighborhood meetings, all kinds of places where people gather already in Eugene. A mobile van would allow us to take library services to those places. This is dividing... Providing the service in an efficient delivery manner. It's not providing a location for that. But it does take it to all those places, and the two areas that we particularly think it would provide services, one is storytimes to children, hands-on instruction, items that could be checked out. This is one of our storytime-to-go sites. And also, training and technology, hands-on to learn the new technology that could be taken out, again, to where people are gathering. This brings another item which we would add with levy option two, and that is tablets or notebooks that could be borrowed by individuals. They'd be owned by the library, and they could be used with the library's Wi-Fi onsite. But we are limited by the 100 computers that we currently have, wired computers that are available for the public, and we're limited by the hours that we're open. This would expand that beyond the 200,000 computer sessions that we already provide every year. A final addition to levy option two would be to expand the downtown library's hours even more. There are certain points of the week that we know we are not meeting people's needs. If you've ever been at the library, a little bit before 10 o'clock, you see the crowd in the entry garden. This would add seven hours to downtown. And the total for levy option two would be $2.8 to $3 million a year, costing the typical household about $35 to $40 a year. Now let's look at level option three, which starts with existing services, adds level one, level two, and then eliminates almost all identified barriers to library services for Eugenians. Levy option three would add two more full-service branches, allowing us to reach people in the northeast and southeast of Eugene. This would pretty much cover the city and make library services accessible in most neighborhoods. Many, many more people could then walk or ride bicycles, especially kids that don't have access to vehicles. It also would make it very convenient and ecologically sound to combine with other trips to other things because it'd be on your way to almost anything. In addition, we would add a second outreach van to double community outreach visits. And this van would be larger, allowing a small space on the van that would be suitable for storytimes or technology training where we could bring this... If somebody doesn't have a space where we're taking the other van, this could take the actual little mini-meeting room to them. So total for option... Levy option three, with these additional... Two additional branches for a total of six physical locations for the library and the double community outreach would be $4.3 to $4.5 million a year, or a total of $55 to $60 for a typical household. Just to finish up, I'd like to leave you with a story about the kind of difference library services can make in people's lives. And it was hard to choose the right story to tell you because there are so many to choose from. But there was a man that the adult services folks helped a few months ago that was particularly touching story for me because this was an older man that had limited access and ability, and he was living without family connections, estranged from his family here in Eugene. He used the library as the center of his social life, and he came in and had gotten to know one of the staff members and talked a little bit about being estranged from his family. With the resources available at the library, library staff was able to connect him with his sister within a few weeks of her death. With your help, we can multiply this kind of story by a thousandfold by increasing access to library services in Eugene. Thank you.
Thank you. So I noted here that on our council options for today's discussion, one is a council may direct staff to prepare one of the three options to place a library levy measure on a ballot with an additional work session to be scheduled prior to February 9th. Or the other option is council may choose not to pursue a library levy at this time. So those are the two options we want to have discussion about, and it's my... In thinking about that, it's my intention to kind of go around and hear from all of you about this. I did a couple comments that I wanted to make is, in relationship to other things that we're doing, the makerspace workspace that you're talking about at the library really fits in with the work the city is doing and the region's doing on entrepreneurship and innovation and building our economy. So this is a piece that people are working on in many places in the country and are working on here. So that really fits in with that. And then I guess the other thing I would say is that the hotspot and all the things that they've shown here in the Library of the Future is really talking, you know, in a very robust way about social equity, that providing a way for everybody to have access to the same things and sort of leveling the playing field for the community in terms of preparation for the future, which is about succeeding where you are and being able to move into a more sound future for our community economically as well as socially. So I think those are things that we should all be keeping in mind about as we think about this. This is not... I know you know this, but I just want to say this. It's not talking about something that's nice. We're talking about something that is sort of essential in how we grow as a community and what the people in our community have access to. So just putting that out there. Anybody want to start the conversation? George?
Thank you.
Come around.
Yeah, first of all, I think we made a mistake years ago when we discontinued funding the operations of the library on a levy. It had fairly good success over the years, and I think that, you know, it's time to rethink that and maybe go back. My question is, is this going... Do we also decide if it's a three- or a five-year levy, or is that...
I'm curious what you think as we go around it.
That's... Okay, that's what I was hoping. To me, you know, it might be a little extra work and mean an extra election, but I think it'd start off with it should be a three-year, and I think there should be some sort of accountability in there. So at the end of that three-year period, we could show the folks, kind of like we did with the road repairs, that here's where the money said it was going, this is what it's actually done. When it comes time to renew it again, maybe we can discuss even increasing it. My other concern is, although everything that you've presented is absolutely worthwhile, and I don't question that, I think that our first venture out on this should be something that's really affordable, you know, to most people. There are some people that won't be able to afford $25 to $30 a year. There are some people that $55 to $60 a year is pocket change. So we need to balance that. And I... Although I'd like to see the Cadillac of the options, I think to start off with, I think we should be very cautious and start off with option number one. And then the fact that we are sending it out to the voters for their approval makes a big difference, too.
Claire, you want to say something?
Yeah, I'd like to be in the queue.
Yeah, you're in. You're in.
Okay, great. Yeah, I appreciate Councilor Pauling's comments. I... Can you hear me all right?
It's pretty crunchy.
All right. Let me try something different.
Better.
Is that any better?
No, it's worse.
Oh, well, then I just have bad phone reception. I apologize. So I appreciate very much the work of staff to craft what I think, you know, is a real robust vision for an accessible library system. I think that's great for us to be thinking in those terms. But I agree with some of Councilor Pauling's comments about proceeding cautiously. So at this point, I would actually support a five-year... Putting out for a vote, the five-year levy of the option one, which is to restore our services, basically as I read it to what we had in 2009 before the recession and the other library option expired. You know, I think folks are starting to feel a little bit better about the economy, but I don't think we're to a place where they're feeling rich and prosperous and ready to support future branch libraries. My concern would be that if we opened a branch library in four years, would we have the resources to keep it going? So I prefer to proceed a little bit more cautiously, but I would support a motion or I might even put one out as the conversation goes to put... Excuse me, to hold a public hearing on a five-year local option levy with the option number one that staff has presented.
So thank you, Claire. And I'm going to just repeat that. My understanding of what she said is that she supports a five-year levy of option one. All right, Alan.
Yeah, thank you to staff for putting out and creating a really great vision about where we need to go and all the people that have been working on this for a long time. Appreciate the work that everybody's put into this. I think we have two issues. That's which option and when. As far as the options are concerned, I am in favor of option two. I think $3 a month or so per household restores the cuts that we made, but adds a little bit more, but not a lot more. It adds a modest amount of hours and some high-tech resources that I think are real valuable in another branch library. I certainly support option one, but I think option two is just a... It's to restore what we got plus a little bit more, but not going as far as option three, which is a lot more than what we just cut. So I like that. I think a five-year levy is probably the way to go. If we're going to do this, let's go five years. And I very much like an accountability mechanism that Councilor Pauling was talking about, very much similar to what we did with the road bonds that we have, an organization or a committee that looks at, makes sure we're spending the money on what we're supposed to be spending it on, and has that report back. As for when, right now, I'm kind of leaning towards a November election as opposed to a May election. Doesn't the May election require a 50% voter turnout in order to pass the levy? No, that doesn't exist for that? Okay. I still think November's probably better chance of passing this than a May election, so I'm in favor of that. I could be persuaded that May works, but I think November's probably better. It also gives us more time to lay the groundwork, which I think is an important part of this as well.
Mike?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for that presentation. I appreciate it. Also, thank you to all the folks who are here from the Library Foundation, all the work that you do. I especially appreciate you in the second, third Saturday of April each year when I show up at 5:00 AM to get my number and be in line, so for the library sale. I suppose the first thing I want to do is ask a question of the City Manager. When we had the old levy expire, we had some significant cuts to library services, and we have over the course of the last few years. But we also backfilled with general funds to the tune initially of about a half a million dollars, as I recall, and then a little bit more as time went on. In other words, we absorbed a huge chunk of expense and we cut at the same time. That's my recollection, right?
I won't remember the exact numbers, and somebody in the room may know better than I, but when the levy expired, the council decision at that time was to absorb those costs into the general fund, which we did over time. And actually, that was multiple millions of dollars, $7 million, $9 million, $12 million. I don't remember exactly.
Previously funded by levy that is...
Five million.
Five million that was previously funded by levy...
Yes.
...that was then covered by general fund.
Correct. And then to kind of answer the second part of the question, then after that, what the Budget Committee and the council eventually did from a budget perspective is, as we had gaps in the general fund, all services were considered, and a portion of the filling of the gaps meant that there were some reductions in library services, particularly around materials and hours at the...
To the tune of what amount, would you say roughly?
Two million.
Two million.
Two million? Okay. So the balance there being that we backfilled with the general fund essentially $3 million that the previous levy was covering, is that correct?
Yes, backfilled or absorbed into the general fund, the $3 million.
So my question is, does this plan moving forward account for that $3 million and take it back out of the general fund and all into the levy? Or does it still maintain then that $3 million in general fund plus additional with the levy?
It's including... The current plan is... Includes all the general fund backfill that hasn't been reduced. So the $3 million is already intended in what we believe the general fund is supporting, the existing service level includes that.
So this would be in addition to what's there. So it's not backfilling any of that $3 million?
My concern is a policy process from this point forward, and it's this. I'm in favor, generally speaking, I think, of letting the public decide the question of the library levy. I'd probably go with option one. I agree, it should be a five-year levy. My concern would be if we get it to some future point where we need across-the-board cuts, as we've done before, after the public has created, you know, new resources for the library, and then we're cutting the general fund support and end up cutting something that they just voted to fund. So I'm not exactly sure how to solve that problem off the top of my head right now, but it gives me pause.
George?
Thanks, Mayor. Well, if, you know, if I... In the ideal world, I would say, let's do option number three and let's put it on the May ballot. But I think it would be perhaps better strategy to... Mine is a little bit different from what all's been presented. Is... I think we agree with Council... I agree with Councilors Alenka. I think we should put it on the November ballot. This will... It's already going to be the county vehicle registration fee evidently will be on the May ballot, I believe. So we've got, you know, two competing things there. And granted, neither amount...
Talk into the mic, George.
Neither amount to most of us in this room is any big deal, but it could be for a lot of people, and it will be for a lot of people. And I think that maybe both would run the risk of being rejected. Plus, if we wait till November, the manager will have presented the financial forecast and the Budget Committee will have met, and we will have an idea of the total financial picture for the city. I mean, who knows? There again, in the ideal world, revenues will be up. Maybe they could shoot some money to the library. I don't know. That would be nice if that could happen. But we'll have a better idea of what all of our needs are. And so... But... And then we wouldn't have to decide, like, right now, which option we want. And once if we decided to do it in the November election, we could have two or three more discussions about it if we wanted to. We wouldn't have to make up, you know, our mind on every single detail today. So I... That's kind of where I'm standing. And it should probably be for three years to build people's trust again, you know? Although maybe that's not necessary. I mean, people do trust the library. People love the library. I'm there almost every day. And so I think that the library might be different, quite a bit different than a lot of other proposals that we might bring for levies. But, you know, we could do a three-year and then increase it later and put it on another ballot and keep it going. Thanks.
Eddie?
Thank you. I can attest to Georgia's being in the library. If I want to see him, I go to the library. And there he is. I thought it was his office. The library has more friends than anybody, I think. I... First I walked in, I thought, who are all those people? Well, of course, they're people who support the library, and I think most people do. I... If, in my ideal world, it would be supported by the general fund as an essential service. But that isn't working right now. I do think it's an essential service, and it should be right there at the top of what we do with our money. If we're going to have a vote, I favor November. I favor five-year levy. And I really think we should try for option three. But if we... I have a question. If it was option two, why does southwest Eugene come before southeast? If it was option two, why does southwest Eugene come before southeast? If you would look at the map, you see there's a lot more space southeast that's far away from any library.
The answer to that is, a couple of times, previous councils had indicated southwest would be the first choice for a third branch, so I was just following that. It's certainly something we could look at a little bit further, if that's the direction council is suggesting we go, do a little bit more surveying and polling. And I do think we need to determine the location of the third branch before we put it out to the voters, so they know what they're voting for.
I agree with that, but I think there is a lot more unserved space. All you have to do is look at that map, way down there, a lot of people that are really far away from a library. I think branch libraries are one of the nicest things you can do for children, really. That is, if I were doing it, I would eliminate some other parts before I would eliminate, I would put an extra branch ahead of some other things you have. But I think five years is a good amount of time. I think that if people are going to vote to spend $30 more a year, they just might as be, might be as likely to vote for 60. But I'm interested, I have another question. When you say average household, average home, what press home is that, an average one?
It's actually not the average home, it's more median home, and so, we use the word typical.
Okay, what would it be, though?
What would the value of the home be? Yeah. I think Sue Cut, so George may be able to speak to that.
Sure. We use the value that the assessor calculates each year for the median home, and it's about $180,000 in assessed value, not, you know, not the value if you were to go out and buy it, but that's the assessed value of the home.
Which would be how much for the value? $200,000, $250, or?
You know, I don't know right off the top of my head.
I thought you knew everything. Thank you.
The jaws of a monkey.
Yes.
Thank you. Just quickly to answer one of the questions about why southwest Eugene. Previous councils have recognized that southwest Eugene has traditionally been shorted on a lot of services. There is no community center there. There is no pool there. There is a few neighborhood parks there, whereas other parts of the city have been served by a lot of other things. It's not about size, it's about services. I think that's why southwest Eugene would be a reasonable place to put a branch library. In terms of talking about what we can do, I think, for me, I'm also a voter, so I have to think, what would I vote for? And really, the factors are what's reasonable, what's specific, and then what's accountable. I think those are important issues. And for me, a reasonableness, I think option one, you could call that kind of a minimal option. What's the minimum we could do to get back up and running? Option two is kind of functional. It does what we need to do, but it provides a limited amount of enhancement, some additional things that would actually be attractive to me as a voter. You're aspiring for more than just kind of keeping the ship from sinking. The third option, to me, is optimal. If we could have whatever we want, what would it be? Which is why I don't tend to favor a third option, because it's great. We would love for everything to be optimal in the city, but it may not be reasonable at this point, particularly if we want to achieve the third item, which is accountability. George brought that up, and I think it's a theme that absolutely needs to come through here. The accountability, I think, comes through being very specific about what we would do, and I like where you've gone so far. I think that's great, and we want to be even more specific about what exactly this money would pay for, and exactly what kind of mechanism would be put in place to make sure that this money is spent in that way. The road bond was successful, as much for its accountability as it was for the volume of projects that got done. It was the combination that made that, and that's a model that we need to follow, and this one could absolutely follow that. I think whether it needs to be three years or five years, three years would be my go-to time, just as others have said, because you want to prove things. Fortunately, we have a library that has already proven itself in previous measures. And so, in this specific case, we could probably get by and go for a five-year measure, and I think we would be a little bit more successful that way. And then, the last idea is when we should go. Like has been mentioned by some others, we'll be in the middle of budget discussions. And wherever that budget discussions go, it could create a complication for talking about serial levies. You're talking budgets, you're talking serial levies, this conversation is beginning to get all intertwined, and I think that could actually become challenging for delivering a very clear message about the need and what you could do with it. I would recommend a November election, because we'll have finished this budget discussion, we'll have put it to bed, and like George, I want to be optimistic that this budget will show a path forward that we've been working on for several years, but that we're getting there. So, I think November would be the best time to do this, so we can have a more focused discussion about the levy and not its implications with the budget.
Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. Again, I want to echo the sentiments that have been said around the table earlier. Great work on the behalf of staff. I want to say, I agree with what, 95% of what everyone has said around this table. I believe that we need to have a five-year levy. I think that we need to have, understand that, take a little step back and understand where we were, where we were at this time last year, in terms of the discussions that we had at the Budget Committee table about cutting branch libraries, and also cutting downtown library hours. And I think that, within that context, we need to look at establishing stability for our library system, making sure that we have a sustainable downtown branch library with all of our hours restored. The same thing needs to be done in both the Sheldon and the Bethel branch libraries. I think a five-year serial levy gives us that. I think that going out in November makes better political strategy for us, because being on a May ballot with another money measure that the county is gonna have out there usually dooms both money measures. People will say no to both, and your message gets muddled, and it doesn't get across. And I think that the library is so important to this community that we deserve to have it on its own separate stage. In addition to that, the five-year levy also gives us some time and some wiggle room to look at additional collaborations and partnerships. As was mentioned about the library in Bethel being coupled with the future West Side Y, there are also other collaborations that can come about through working with the school districts and other entities in the community to expand our capacity. Because one of the things that we're gonna be challenged with, and continue to be challenged with, is providing capacity over a long-term basis. And so, that's where technology is gonna play into the game. And so, looking at other discrete pieces of other options, specifically when we talk about, you know, notebooks, or, you know, iPads, or whatever the case may be, I think are really sound strategies that we need to continue to pursue as we are pursuing a stable base for our financial operations for the library. So, those are my comments. Again, option one, five-year levy, and then, at some point, we have a midterm review of that five-year levy.
So, clarification. Chris, did you show a reference for one or two?
I'd like to look at two, but I'm willing to go with one.
So, the way that I hear now is every, we didn't hear anybody say, "Don't do anything." I heard the majority say November. I heard the majority say five-year, and I heard the majority say option one, and then move forward from there. So, that's up to you about how you want to put a motion out. And I've got George, and then Mike.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, I was just gonna bring up the point about being careful about when we actually put a measure out because of competing ballot measures, and at this point, I really don't know if there's gonna be any in the May or November. I know the county is still working on their vehicle registration fee. I don't know where they are on that. Maybe somebody can help me out on that. So, we need to be real careful on that. And I don't know if the accountability part of it needs to be a full-blown committee to go over it, as opposed to a very detailed spreadsheet of, from staff, or from staff and/or the Library Foundation people to demonstrate where. I really don't know if going through a full committee like we did with the road fund is necessary. And I have my notes already written, that, yeah, I'd be okay with changing from a three-year to a five-year.
And Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to readdress the point that I was making at the end there last time, do I have it correct that predominantly, when we had a levy in the first place, library services were funded maybe predominantly or entirely by the levy and not by general fund, or do I have that backwards?
Actually, the levy always supplemented general fund.
Okay.
And at its very highest point, it was about 50/50.
Okay, I didn't want to, excuse me, I didn't want to leave the wrong impression with my question, I just want to clarify that. I think there are several other issues, other than just the county having its road question. I think the school district's another. I think there are a couple of questions that may be intelligent for us to consider, so I don't know how to leave us wiggle room with the when part of this question. But I can support what I heard the mayor kind of clarify there at the end, I suppose. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. You finished, Mike?
Yes, thank you, yes.
Couple of quick things, George. I don't think, you don't necessarily need to decide that now, the mechanism for the accountability. I think we've all learned very much that that's an important piece, and that can be a part of your conversation as we go forward, so we don't need that guidance right now. And then, whether or not option one or two, I know there's some split, predominance one, one thing we could do is when we come back next time, we could bring some additional data or information that could help shape that conversation, if you'd like that, so you don't have to nail it as one or two today, if you don't choose to, because it'd be time. And then, lastly, the options there talk about a February 9th date. With going in November, the February 9th date was set up as a potential, if you wanted to go in May. If you're gonna go in November, you don't need to set that specific date in your motion. And then, we'll just come back to ensure there's plenty of time for council conversation.
Greg Glenn might be able to help you get your.
Yeah, 'cause now, with that additional information, I'm thinking that probably, maybe the motion should read more or less, "Council direct staff to prepare a new, or a comprehensive option to place a five-year levy on the ballot, five-year library levy measure on the ballot with an additional work session to be determined."
That sounds fine, if you just have with an additional, or the next work session scheduled during the spring. That means the manager will come back in April, May, June, but in plenty of time. Your deadline for acting will be before your summer recess in August. So, if we come back in the springtime, that gives you several months to refine the scope of it.
Do we need a date specific, say?
No.
Or just say, you know, to come back by the spring?
Come back in the spring works.
The spring, with a work session. Okay, well, then, I'll go ahead and move this. I move that council direct staff to prepare a comprehensive option to play, as a five, to place a library levy measure on the ballot with an additional work session to be determined for spring of 2015.
November ballot?
November ballot, yes.
Is there a second?
Claire, seconded.
Okay. Mike?
Can we leave the determination in November out, if we're gonna have another work session on it, and make that determination after we get better information about what may be competing on the ballot?
Decide by February 9th.
If you, you don't have to say it's going to be on the November 2015 ballot, but if you don't have a work session and take final action by February 9th, it will not be, it cannot be on the May ballot. So, what you'd be determining with this motion, since we wouldn't be coming back to spring, is that it wouldn't be in May.
No, I got that, we're not gonna do it in May, but I mean even later than that, if necessary.
From 16.
Day of 16.
There isn't anything that the council would be doing in this motion that would legally require you.
All right.
'Cause we're asking for additional information to be brought back by that work session.
And then, it's direct the manager, not staff, right?
Right.
Okay, everybody ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, Claire?
Yes.
Eight. Eight in favor, none in opposition. Thank you all. All right, next item up. Mupti.
And fire.
Oh, yeah. Kind of a nice.
So, multi-unit property tax exemption program revisions. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And you know, we've had numbers of conversations around this, and we look forward to having several more, and I'll turn it over to Denny.
Thank you. I just want to talk about two things, really. It's timing, and just kind of taking a look at how the program's gonna work, at least given the ordinance that's on the table and some of the revisions that we are proposing. First, regarding the timing, the program has been suspended until February 28th. Previous work session, the council has expressed the desire to avoid another extension and adopt these program revisions before the current suspension expires. To do that, the ordinance would have to be adopted 30 days before February 28th. And our recommendation today really is to review some revisions to the ordinance that have come forward since the public hearing in November, and then bring those back after some council deliberation, and any other additions that the council might want to see in amended ordinance that council would consider at the next work session, which is scheduled next week for the 21st. If we're successful, we could get the ordinance in place in time to avoid an additional suspension. If not, we are really looking at doing another public hearing, another, new ordinance to extend the suspension again. When we're talking about the ordinance becoming effective, it's important to just kind of keep in mind, at least initially, we're talking about the downtown plan boundary only being activated, with other areas potentially being activated in the future after some additional planning. The exception would be the opportunity siting option that we have talked about, which really is an opportunity for the neighborhood in partnership with the developer to be able to come forward with an application that they support for consideration before those areas are activated. So, that would be kind of a site-specific opportunity site. We propose that that be piloted for three years, and that we review it before the end of the three years to see if council wants to kind of continue that opportunity siting option or feature in the program. I'm gonna now refer to the flow chart I just, that was handed out. I thought this would be a good way of kind of walking through where we stand today, giving all the kind of new features, or just a lot of new content and a lot of few new features, and I think this is a good way to kind of get our hands around it all. I'm gonna start on the top left. There'll still be some required, in this case, meaningful outreach to the neighborhoods before a project applies for the Mupti program tax exemption. That's still part of the program. The application is submitted. As you look over to the right, there's public benefit requirements in the program. These are all new. The existing program doesn't really have these kinds of requirements. If you remember, there was a scoring system. In the current version of Mupti, if you got 100, you got 100 points just being downtown, and that's really all you needed for consideration, is 100 points. So, there really weren't firm requirements like we're proposing now, so all of these are new. Within the requirements, the only really change we've made since we went to public hearing is around, or we're recommending at least, is around affordable housing, and what we're proposing is that the fee be waived in the event that affordable housing is actually incorporated into a project, and that the fee be waived in a couple of areas. Trainsong and West 11th, as we've identified, has kind of an additional incentive to see development go forward, or redevelopment go forward in those neighborhoods. We've talked about that in the past, it just wasn't in the, or isn't in the current ordinance. We've talked about the Mupti review panel, and what their role might be. The change that we're recommending really is that the neighborhood associations appoint the two standing members on the committee, and that the neighborhood association where the project is located actually appoint the two representatives for that project, and that's a change. Off to the right, you'll see an addition as well, which is new, which is that we are proposing that we also have another layer of financial transparency, so to speak, and analysis that would be done by an independent third party, and that's kind of a new. analysis that would be done by an independent third party, and that's kind of a new feature that we really hadn't talked about before. The idea being that a financial professional, independent, think of that as an appraiser or CPA specializes in real estate, would provide an analysis of the application as the Mupti review panel is reviewing, and that analysis would be available to the panel, would also be available to city council when they look at the application. I would also mention that the pro forma application, financial information, has always been part of the public record, so to speak. Applications are actually available for public to review as part of our program now, and council has always had access to the financial projections as part of the review. We also have the additional public benefit criteria, which is a feature that really allows us to look at tax exemptions of less than 10 years. Historically, every project generally has gotten a 10-year exemption, the new program would allow us to curb that back if the project doesn't really need a 10-year tax exemption, but also provides opportunities for projects to earn their way up, to provide some additional years of exemption if they provide some enhancements to the project to make it better, and that's basically how that feature works. Council still approves all the applications. We've added two neighborhood engagement features that come after the application is approved, which is new, and that is like during design, we want the neighborhood to have access to the development and the development team, design team, as the project's being designed. We also want opportunity for us and for neighborhood, for the community, to review those projects as they're going to permits, to make sure they're at least planning to build what they said they were going to build, so that's a new feature. Construction moves forward, we've added a recommendation that, to the extent possible, STCs that are generated by a project in a neighborhood, that those STCs are used in that neighborhood, and that's a proposed addition to the ordinance. Once the project is done, we would review the conformance, make sure that they have really met all of the criteria, that's part of the program. If not, that tax exemption approval would be terminated, if not, or if they do meet the criteria, the tax exemption would be granted. We also have a feature that they submit annual financial statements after the project is completed. Another role for that independent third-party reviewer would be to help us and the panel review those financial statements, so that we really have a good look at how these projects are working, because that really helps us decide whether the Mupti program generally is still needed going forward. That review would also be used in an annual report, that the panel would work with staff to generate an annual report that goes to council so that we truth the program and take a look at how it's working going forward. So that's generally how it would work. I understand there's some other discussions about adding some other criteria, but generally, I think the idea, if we're going to stay on schedule, given the current suspension, the idea would be that we come back with an ordinance next week with some of these changes and additional changes that council would like to see.
And thank you for the graphic, I think it's very helpful. Got in the queue, Mike, and then George Brown and George Poling. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. When all of us recognized and first started working on this, that we needed to make revisions to this ordinance. One of the keys for me was that we come back with something that a majority of people in the community could support, thought was a good idea, would probably go, "Yeah, that makes sense, I get that." I think that, Danny, I think you and staff have done a great deal of work here, and I very much appreciate it. I'm not sure that we're there yet. I'm not sure we're quite ready yet, and I have some concerns. For me, I think Mupti is important because it's about, at the moment, in its application, it's to me about downtown public safety. The more people live downtown, the safer downtown will be, plain and simple. But building more and more people living downtown and building more, and larger buildings downtown creates impacts on livability for the people who live there now and around there. And so it's important to me that a couple of things happen. One, it's important that we mitigate those impacts to those people effectively, and I'll speak to that in a second. Number two, that we address public benefit appropriately, and everybody's got their ideas on that, the one important to me isn't addressed appropriately on here. Now, it says local economic impact, and that's important, of course, but I've been very specific from the start, that the important piece to me is that we hire people who live in Eugene for the projects that get built in Eugene. Local hiring of local people, not just local companies, but the people that do the work. If we're going to give a tax incentive for building something, it should get, it should come through in the wages of the people doing the building, and they should be from Eugene. Now, I know we have legal issues around that, but to the degree possible, that's important to me. The other piece is mitigating the consequences to the neighborhoods, that's the SDC piece that I've brought up, and I'm glad to see that in there, I appreciate that. But I don't think we have captured yet the piece that allows the folks in that neighborhood to say, "These are the impacts I'm concerned about." Now, having two neighborhood representatives on the panel is fine, having the panel is fine, but I still believe this has to go as an application to the affected neighborhood association as a whole, they have to be able to weigh in on it, and their comments have to come directly to council, because we're the ones that will be accountable to say yes or no, that we believe those impacts to that area are suitable or unsuitable. So for me, I'm not ready to move this forward yet because it still needs some correction. Thank you.
George?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Councilor Clark is entirely correct, we're not anywhere close to where this needs to be. First of all, to make sense as a program, and second of all, more importantly, to gain wide community support. There's still so many things to work on. I hope that everybody had a chance to read Mr. Hellickson's analysis of the Eugene land model and projects that have been built in the last three years since January 1st, 2012. I'll give a brief summary to people that are listening or perhaps watching. Envision Eugene's Eugene land model shows a 20-year multifamily need of 6,797 units. 3,776 would be in five-plus unit structures. This is the only portion of that need that is covered by our current Mupti. In other words, if you're going to give a tax exemption, they have to be building at least five units, the other ones don't count. Since January 1st, 2012, a total of 3,574 five-unit beds have been, units have been built. So if you take the perceived need of 3776 and you subtract 3574, that's actually been built on the ground or soon to be completed in mere three years, you have a total deficit of 202 units, five-plus units, that need to be built in the next 17 years of the 20-year planning horizon. We don't need Mupti to build those 202 units. We don't need it. And if we're going to be using this, therefore, we cannot use the criteria of, "Well, why do we have Mupti?" Well, it's to encourage the creation of fourth, you know, the 1,400 units, or whatever it is, the exact number keeps changing. We don't, we don't need that, we don't need it to do that. The number is wrong in our primary assumption of the Mupti. So we need to do a fundamental review of why do we want to have, if we want to have a 10-year tax exemption program, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't, but we definitely don't need Mupti, we don't need it the way it's set up now. So that's the first thing we need to do. I mean, we can talk about various details of the requirements of the program, but it's all meaningless if we don't have a good fundamental purpose to have this program in the first place, and there is no way that we will have a product ready a week from now to go to a public hearing. We definitely need to suspend, to continue the suspension. I would suggest two, three, or four months, at the rate we're going now, there's just no way we're going to have a product ready for a public hearing, and I will need, definitely need a second round, Mayor.
George Poling?
Thank you. Yeah, I would just like to agree with Mike on the input from the neighborhood associations, because they're the ones that are going to take, feel the full impact on it. I do have some concerns about the definition of local hiring and the availability of local hiring. I realize that, you know, Mike said, you know, local hiring, to him that hiring people here in Eugene that work, that live here. But as we know, our workforce is pretty well scattered throughout the county, so I think we need to try to come up with a workable definition of what local hiring really means. But I too am in favor of making sure that the people are hired from within our available workforce, and I understand there will be times where perhaps the job that's needed to be done, or the type of worker that is needed to get the job complete is not available because of other projects going on, so there has to be some wording that gives them an escape, where they don't have to hold up a project working for somebody that knows how to install a certain piece of equipment. The other thing is, and I've discussed this before, and I discuss it with the city manager, is on the affordable housing fee, I think that we need to include an affordable housing fee waiver that would be equal to the same percentage of whatever the fee is. If a project is already, tentatively, it's set at 10%, so if a project is, say, putting in 20% of their project as dedicated affordable housing, they shouldn't have to be turning around and have to pay an additional 10% because you're basically double billing them. So I think there needs to be wording on that, and I would request that we come up with wording for an amendment to the ordinance to include that, the waiver of the affordable housing fee if there is the, equal to or greater than a percentage of units.
Chris?
Thank you. Kind of a macro thought and then getting more to micro thought. The macro thought is, I also agree with some of the comments, that we need to find and ensure that there is a very meaningful and sincere opportunity for neighborhoods to participate in this process, and I think we've been trying to build a lot of that in here, and I think a lot of the recommendations are good. And if there's some additional tweaking to ensure that level of participation, whether it's through an appointment process, or membership, or representation, or review, or whatever, I think we need to continue with that, and you've done a lot here, if there's any final little additional tweaks that might help. But at a macro level, and I've talked about this with neighborhood people themselves, is we need to provide as much participation and as much influence and involvement, but the city council cannot relegate its authority to neighborhood folks. In other words, we need to provide as much meaningful opportunity to have input, but stopping short of actually passing authority off, because it's the responsibility and the authority of the city council to make the decisions. With that said, if you create neighborhood involvement, and then we say, "Thank you very much, we're going to go ahead and do what we were going to do anyway," that's not sincere, it's not meaningful. So I want to make sure that whatever involvement we build in is built in a way that demonstrates we really want to have that participation, and we will be influenced by that participation. But the decision will ultimately be made by the council, and I think that a lot of that is put in here, and I think that's good, and we want, we'll want to keep that. So whatever we can do to tweak that, I think is fine. I think at the micro level, some of the recommendations that are being made in terms of tweaks, I think are okay. I know that Alan has a couple of tweaks, and, you know, I want to hear kind of the thinking around those and some other things, and how they can, how they can all go towards making the final product. But I don't want us to get so bogged down and slowed down that we don't make progress. We still need to get a Mupti passed. I'm still committed to getting a Mupti passed. I want it to be as good as it can be, but I'm not looking to try to tweak this thing to death. We still need to keep moving forward. So let's do as much as we can, as quickly as we can, and as meaningfully as we can, but let's keep moving forward. We just need to make sure that we get something put together.
So I've got Alan in the queue next. Is there any response to any of the things that have been brought up here before that you have, Denny?
Not at this point, Mayor.
Okay, Alan?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, my original revisions, I went back and looked at my notes, and I wrote down some of the lessons learned from Capstone and some of the things that I thought we could do to improve this, that would get my support, and the list back then, back a year ago, was no student housing, we did that, fee for low-income housing, we did that, limit the rate of return to 10%, we did that, energy efficiency, better than code, 10 to 15% more, we did that, local hire requirement, we've done that, it's 50% of the dollar spent on local firms. After talking to Representative Paul Hovey, I think he's convinced me that this is a legally, legal and politically sticky place to be in terms of what we can do, and I think we probably got it right, it's not perfect, but it's probably close enough, that we needed to do minority-winning business hiring requirement, did that, requirement to follow wage, tax, and license laws, we did that, financial reporting requirement, we included that, electric vehicle ready with conduits in place for charging stations, we did that, additional neighborhood meetings and review, we did that, we'll have more discussion on that, higher density requirement, we did that, basic design principles, we did that, put a volume cap on it, citywide, did that, and had an independent citizen review panel, we've done that. So we've done all of those things, those are substantial changes to this program, very, very substantial changes. And I think the bottom line for me was, they need to be revised so that had two things, one, that it was more transparent, and that it created actual and clear public benefit. I think we've accomplished both of those things, I think the rules need to be tweaked some, and I had a couple of things about that. One of the issues with the BUT-4 test, meaning that you do through this analysis, that's always been part of it, which is the problem, it, people don't believe it, and if you're not a financial whiz, you can't, it's difficult to get your head wrapped around the fact that you can't get the money if it's not written out on paper. So that's a part of that messaging, and maybe we can work on that a little bit more. The motion I put out for the review panel, the intent there was less than sort of from Capstone, too, that it's become political, this issue, so I think it needs to be a council and mayor-appointed body rather than a city manager-appointed body. City attorney pointed out that there's some problems with that, because this is originally written as an advisory to the city manager, so there need to be some tweaks to that. But I think it needs to be more than just an upfront look, it needs to be upfront, midway, and at the, and at the end, so it monitors it, we've done that with Capstone, I think we would have been way better off. And so the motion wouldn't be this exact language, would bring back something similar to this. And I also have a question, the other motion I had was limiting the ROR rate of return to 10%, and if we're going to do that, we really should do that, not just at the beginning, but also at the end, and look back and see if it worked. I have another round, Mayor.
All right, Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. I concur with Alan on virtually mostly everything that you've said, I think that it's good that you have the ability to recount every piece of rigor that has now been established within the, yeah, within the framework of Mupti, because if I recall correctly, when we started this conversation, there was virtually no rigor built into the tool. And now we have rigor, now we have demonstrated public benefit, and we have the kind of framework that I think gives us an opportunity to move forward. I don't think that we should throw the baby out with the bathwater. I think that, you know, just going through the economic development process and conversations that we've had in Bethel recently, I think that it's important to note that the toolbox that the city has to be able to support and to be able to foster good, solid development, whether that be in housing, or in industrial, or any other category of development, is limited. Urban renewal has its limitations, there are, you know, the business enterprise zones have a lot more limitations, there are limitations for virtually every tool that we have to incentivize and to create the kind of development that will enhance and enrich our community. And so I think that we need to be very careful about how much rigor we build in, and to allow that there is some flexibility to go along with this, so that people can actually use the tool for what it's meant to be, but by the same token, be held accountable for their actions in using the tool, and that we have the kind of transparency that gives people in our community, whether they support Mupti or not, the confidence that the tool is working the way that it's supposed to work. And so I think we're all- And so I think we're almost there, and I think I'm pretty comfortable with where we're at. I don't think that we need to take, you know, four, you know, three, four, five more months to, you know, figure this out. I think we're pretty close to doing it, and that we need to reopen the program and begin to allow people who want to have the opportunity to utilize the program to do so and to demonstrate their ability to be good citizens and people who can do good projects. We already have some demonstration of that with the Hub, which nobody talks about because there's no controversy around it.
Not now.
Not now, anyway. Cross our fingers, but there isn't. So there's my two cents on that.
Larry, did you have something you wanted to say?
And again, I apologize for the bad communications. I agree with much of what Councilor Zolinko is saying and look forward to discussing the particulars of his motion when we come back to that. I wanted to put forward my motion around transparency and see if I get a second, because it will help us maybe move along. And the rationale for this motion is that if this is going to be a successful program, you know, as we've discussed, the public's got to have confidence in its efficacy, and that can't happen within a setup that limits transparency. And right now, I felt like, you know, even with the good work that staff is doing, I find the answers around the need for lockdown confidentiality to just be unsatisfactory. And I think we need a deeper look at that, and it may be we end up in the same place, but we at least have something vetted around why we've ended up there. So I'm going to put my motion out and see if I get a second. I move to direct the city manager to convene an ad hoc committee to provide the council with recommendations for furthering the goals of transparency regarding the financial review required for a MUPD project while still accommodating the developers' need for some level of assurance and confidentiality. The council recommends that this committee include members of the MUPD Accountability Group, as well as those individuals who've been providing staff with technical assistance, and two city councilors.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Councilor Brown and then Councilor Clark.
Thank you. Yes, this leads me to my second topic, transparency. There's terrible problems. There were terrible problems with the old one. There's terrible problems associated with what we've worked on so far. And the reason, I gave everybody a copy of this pro forma primer. This is by a very experienced person who's worked in development for years and also for accounting firms. And I don't expect everyone to absorb it today, but we should discuss it at our next meeting. Basically, pro formas are very fluid documents. So let me give you an example. And by the way, we don't, we do not monitor the developer's rate of return through the 10-year exemption period like Portland does. It's a sensible thing to do, to make sure that they're making their 10 percent and not greatly over the 10 percent. So that's a very sensible, Portland does that. Here's the problem. I stopped by the Hub, speaking of Hub, I stopped by Hub Core Campus Leasing Office yesterday, and I got a rate sheet for the apartment rents, for depending on the type of unit, how many beds within the unit. The average price of a bed, they're charging $200 more per bed than they presented to us. When was it, two and a half, three years ago? 200 bucks more a bed. And if you do the math, 513 units, times $200 a month, times 12 months, times 10 years, and if you subtract the 1 million that they're going to kick back to the city, and you subtract 1.2 million for, I'm being generous, I'm assuming a 90 percent occupancy rate, not 95 is what they assume on pro forma. They're making an extra $10 million. Extra $10 million beyond what the pro forma that they presented to us. So yes, there's problems. Now, I went to the Portland Housing Bureau site this morning to get some information, and they have added a new requirement. You have to present the council with three pro formas. The two that we're familiar with, returned with or without the exemption, and the third one, what would be the necessary increase in unit rents from either scenario to achieve the same cash-on-cash return as with the exemption? We don't require that. We need, that needs to be, it needs to be in there because that is exactly what Hub did. They gave us two scenarios, but they used scenario number three. And when you read through this little primer here, you will see how this works. We'll have a better idea of how this works. So, you know, if we don't, I'm telling you, if we don't make these transparency changes, we're going to be in big trouble with the residents because they're not going to support it. I don't need another round if there's time.
I don't know how we'll do with rounds, given the time.
I will see, but I'd like one if possible.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I don't have any problem with the idea of transparency and financial disclosure around this stuff. If you're asking for public money, you should show us the plans and the financials that you're using to do those calculations. I don't have any problem with that. The issue that I am hearing, though, that does concern me at the table as well, I appreciate Claire's motion at this time, I was under the impression we were going to go through some of these on a line-by-line, we call it at the time Chinese laundry kind of, you know, we're going to take the pieces that we had broad agreement for at the table and build then an ordinance that all of us could support. And the reason I say that, and it's important, is because I've just kind of listened to the nose count at the table, and it sounds like we'll move forward, like it has a majority to move forward to public hearing and then on. That concerns me because we're not in the place, and I disagree with Alan, we don't have clear public benefit here with all of the pieces. There's parts of this that are clearly not accepted by a broad majority of the general public that don't know that, and even if you presented them the details, wouldn't support it. One of the issues that I'd hoped we would have done in the first place would have been to rally the support of organizations that had concerns, neighborhood associations and some of those that Claire is trying to address here, and others, so that they could speak about their support for it. I believe what we'll hear at a public hearing is the places where people still have trouble with this, they're opposed to it, or they have a problem with it. And I think that's an indication that we're not ready to move forward. So I hope people will pause and think about that. If we do, I suppose, I'll sit with Glenn, because I think there are two or three amendments that are necessary, that could make it more publicly palatable, but I wouldn't guarantee it. And I think we're moving forward right now in an inadvisable way if we push this along before it's ready.
George Poling?
Thank you. I just have a little bit of concern about Claire's motion because it's not really clear as to timelines, you know, when's this committee going to meet, who, exactly the number of people, who exactly they're going to come from. I realize she's got the MUPD Accountability Group, as well as those individuals who have been providing staff with technical assistance. But I just, my biggest concern is the timeline and how much this is going, how long this ad hoc committee, if this motion passes, how long are they going to take? And what exactly is their charge? So I still have too many questions about some of the issues on this motion.
Chris?
Yeah, actually, I was going to ask the same thing that George just asked. I mean, I like the idea of having this. I think it's a great proposal. I'm glad that Claire brought it up. But I just want to know how this is going to impact our timeline. Because I don't know whether we have, how much pressure there is on our timeline right now. Do we have the luxury of being able to go, you know, two, three, four months out? Or are there things that are just sitting there waiting for us to be? I don't know what the impact is on our timeline. And related to that, what I'm hearing is, well, we need to have some continued discussion. And there's two paths discussion can take. Continue with philosophical discussion, which can go on for six more months, or a year, or however long it takes. Philosophical discussions can take forever. But something that Mike mentioned may actually be a simpler way to go, which is, we are so close that maybe we should borrow a page from some of the other things we've done and start bringing specific amendments, and say, "We're close to getting something passed. Let's just bring amendments, vote up or down on them, see where we are, and keep this thing moving forward." What the impact that has on an ad hoc committee is, I don't know. I'd like to hear what a committee would have to say. I just am really worried it's going to slow us way down. So if you thought we could get something done in two weeks, 30 days, you know, I might be willing to support this. If you think you could pull this off in a month, and that may not hurt us too badly with the other work that we're doing. But I really can't go with something that might take another three, four, or five months to do.
What would be helpful is to get a better understanding of what this committee would look at. And Councilor Shalit really focused on financial transparency. Again, keep in mind that during the application, the pro forma financial information is a matter of public record. In fact, we've put it out at our front desk for the community to come look at, engage with. Council gets those numbers. The confidentiality issue really is, we're now asking them to submit financial statements on a completed project, audited financial statements, which really is the basis that they use for their tax returns. That's a little bit different level of, you know, public availability for those financial statements, because that would be like my financial statement, so to speak. Who would I want to open those up to? So that's really where the confidentiality, I think, comes in, not, you know, the pro forma and the projections and at that level. So it'd be helpful to understand what this committee would look at, and would it be expanded beyond just financial? I've heard neighborhood issues, more involvement for neighborhood. Are we really looking at those issues as well?
So perhaps a suggestion might be, if this motion were not to pass because of the concern over the time, what Claire's looking for in her in terms of answers and so forth, you could still pursue with her and with others to say, "Okay, we're not going to create this committee, and we're not going to take the time to do this." But her concerns, her needs are still valid. And so we would still work to try to address those concerns as quickly as possible. And so you would work with Claire, you'd work with whoever else you needed to, as quickly as possible, to still address these issues even if we didn't put this committee together. That would be my hope.
City manager, do you have something you wanted to say right now?
Well, I was just, wanted to make sure I understand. Chris, what you were saying was, is that as part of the specific amendment process of Claire or others wanted to work with that group to come back with specific amendments rather than a subcommittee, is that what you were suggesting?
That may be one way to do it. What I was suggesting was that, perhaps more informally, Denny could work with Claire and whoever else she might suggest quickly to come up with what these needs were and how they might be put in the form of amendments, whether you bring them or we bring them. But probably the mechanism would wind up being an amendment process, but to still deal with these issues, but not have to go through a whole committee process to do it.
Claire, do you want to clarify?
I was really envisioning, you know, maybe two meetings that are two and a half hours long each. I do not think that needs to be a lengthy process. I just think there's great value in having once community members get together to advise the council on this issue. Again, it creates, I think, greater accountability and buy-in to the program, and then we could present whatever their recommendation is, you know, we might use that as one of those amendments that Councilor Parr is looking at. So, you know, I'm hearing from my fellow councilors that, you know, that there's not a majority maybe ready to move this to that public hearing. I think this committee could meet, you know, twice within the next 30 days and turn this around pretty quickly.
City manager?
Just a couple of things. One is, there actually isn't a public hearing proposed, nor, because you've had the public hearing and the ordinance, so that would be up to you. I don't know if it's an option that, if you have a motion that says by X date, if everybody could have their proposed amendments in, and if that's 30 days out, or 60 days out, or whatever you want, that might help, at least capturing all the amendments. That group could be one of those that's proposing amendments at that time as well. Here, though, we should do a work session, right? Well, you would propose them back here.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we should have yet another work session for the strict purpose of considering those amendments, because we should have vigorous debate at this table about each.
Get me in the second room.
Not in this queue, I don't have you. I have you in the former queue, not on this motion.
Oh.
Yes.
The February 20, where's the dev? This is February 28 suspension, so we need 30 days before that. That's, so that means we really only have next week, which means one more work session to work out everything. What happens if we don't make that? That's not very likely. So what happens if we don't make the February, what happens on the 28th?
We'll need to do a public hearing to extend the suspension and have a new ordinance suspending this. So every time we have extended the suspension, we've had a public hearing and an ordinance to do that. So we'd have to do that yet again.
So we'd have nothing come back into effect, the old rules.
Yes, if we do nothing, the, yes, that's correct.
I think we actually need to move on that path, which is to get us down another extension and push this out so we can work through some of these. I support Claire's motion, and I think it will help us with the transparency issue and the confidentiality agreement issue. And maybe if the city manager could bring back a process and timeline for how this would work, if we could pass this motion with the understanding that they would bring back that process and timeline, then we can move forward. I think, Chris, you've often said we can have a fast, cheaper write, and in this case, fast is not the right way to go if we want to get it to be right. So I think one more work session isn't going to make us there. So I think doing this, as well as looking at some of the other issues, and doing a date certain where we have all the different amendments move forward, is a good idea. And so I still have one more thing on the, can I talk about that right now?
We've got like three minutes here to finish up this part.
I'll do it in a minute. Other motion that I had, speaking of amendments, the rate of return to 10 percent, if we're going to do it, it's really limited, not just the beginning. I think that's a two-way street. If at the end, if it's too low, make an extension. If it's too big, then reduce the benefit. It's not perfect. The criticism before was, it was too burdensome, and it was, and we needed too much information. But this way of doing it is using all the information that we're already getting, that's already provided, using that information to make that determination. So if we're counting on that information to be correct, then we can make a determination off it, then it's actually no extra burden, no extra information needed. We can just go forward with that. And I would also like a response to the volume cap issue that Helix and Analysis and Councilor Brown's conclusion that we only need 202 more units, and therefore we don't really need MUPD.
So I want to make another suggestion for you to consider. And my, and I don't know if this is possible, not given what's on the agenda, so I'll ask John to look at this. But it seems to me that if you wanted to, and I understand some of you don't, but if you really wanted to kind of get through this in a, you could add another work session, so you could have two prior to the date. If we could do some of it on the 20th and some of it on the 21st, then, and we had it very well organized, you could march through those things and see if we can get to a place of agreement before we have to start the whole process over again. So I'm looking to you, city manager, to, whether you think that's a, and then it's you guys, it's up to you what you want to do.
Yes, if the council would like to have a couple of work sessions between now and that date, we'll figure out how to put those in to your schedule.
And frankly, I think if you wanted to, you could, you know, we have a public, that's actually a public hearing night on the 20th, John.
That's correct.
It's a public hearing night on the 20th.
So you could decide to have one on that date, for example.
At 5:30.
Oh, like 5:30. Yeah.
I'm looking, maybe at that point, you can decide whether we got enough down the road to try to get it done in those two, in those two sessions or not.
And if this committee could do their work if it gets passed.
And that committee, right. So right now, you're, we're on Claire's motion. You have something to Claire's motion?
Yeah, I would say that, I'll vote against it, because like Chris, I'm not entirely clear on all of its intent, purpose, and construction. But I am in favor of the idea of letting other groups, not just this one, participate in the process of aiding our discussion and our amendments, so that we get something broader, that a broader part of the community can support. So no on this, yes on the broader idea.
Yes.
Two suggestions. One is, I think it's implicit in the motion, but I'd like to have One is, I think it's implicit in the motion, but I'd like to have Claire confirm that it's the city manager who's appointing the ad hoc committee if the motion passes, or is it the council, or is it you as the mayor? The other is, what you could do to combine what you just said about having an extra meeting next week, the council could move to postpone Claire's motion to Tuesday at a 5:30 work session, which would both have the effect of allowing you to continue the conversation about Claire's motion next week, so you're not rushing through now. And it also establishes that you are having a meeting Tuesday at 5:30 before your public hearing.
So moved?
So someone want to make?
So moved?
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any comment?
I wanted to make sure I'm available at 5:30.
All right, all those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four.
Claire?
Claire?
Yes.
Five in favor and in opposition, two, so it passes, so that's off until next week, and then we're going to try to put another meeting in place to see if we get through this, right?
But we will have a meeting at 5:30 on the 20th.
Yep, okay, all right.
Don't we have to vote on Claire's motion?
20th and the 21st.
The original motion that was?
No, because Claire, you guys moved it away.
We voted to reschedule, for the 20th and the 21st.
Oh, right, right. It was the reschedule.
Okay, so I think that, we're done? Right, okay, thank you, everybody.